I want to thank everybody for coming out. I hope everybody can hear me. I will try to speak with this loud voice throughout the session. I have two handouts. One is a press release that was issued by the borough when the Form-Based Code became public, not became, but when the document, when the draft document, the first draft, was released in September 2015. And I think it summarizes a lot of the design goals that were placed in the document by the planning commission and the Borough Council at that time. And I like to have everyone have access to read something while I'm droning on. So at least if you're not paying attention, you'll not be paying attention to something related. Also, this is a document, there are two pages. I did not have time to staple and collate. This is kind of the process over time. So where, when we started with the Montgomery County Planning Commission, leading until today. So this kind of gives you a background on how we got to where we are, which well, I will address in some detail.
Is it one page or two?
It's two pages. So take two pages and you can pass. Tonight's meeting is an informational meeting. Unfortunately, it means I have to try and deliver a lot of information. I've been collecting a lot of comments from the community. And the goal is to kind of get answers, get information out there. I'm not going to be taking public comment tonight or questions. But Wednesday night is a caucus meeting. That's a public meeting of all of Borough Council. I expect that the Form-Based Zoning Code will be on the table for some discussion in terms of how and in what way it might move forward. So you have an opportunity to make a comment then before any official action might happen. And then on the following evening, Thursday evening, I will be here again. And I encourage all of you to return and bring your friends and neighbors and tell me what you think. Tell me what you think could be more questions. Tell me what you think could be, you know, disagreement with some of the things you've heard, or it could be, you know, support for certain aspects of what you might hear. The goal of this meeting is to open the lines of communication. Because what I've seen in terms of sitting at the head of the table and running a council meeting, and what I've seen on Facebook, is a lot of people who are smart, who care about this community, who have great ideas, who may not always agree, but I don't, I don't hear a lot of listening. I hear a lot of, one person says one thing and the other person makes a counterpoint, and 27 lines later, they're just still going at it. And, you know, I have my own opinions about Facebook as a pretty ineffective tool for public debate, or anything more than, ooh, that's a cool looking car you got, and how many cats do you have? So, you know, that's me. But in some ways, the medium becomes the message. And, you know, you see people who post on Facebook in any aspect of our lives, and if it goes more than a couple lines, your crazy meter starts to go off. But if you were to look at that in an email, it could be like a one-line email when it goes across the screen. So it really distorts the kinds of messaging. That extremely complex document, like Chapter 124, Form-Based Zoning Code Draft, which I count at, how many pages? Let's see. Hundred and how many? Double Play Price is Right. Hundred and fourteen pages? Survey says. Hundred and four pages. You're over, you win nothing. It's complicated, and it's very dense. And even with its visual language, it can be hard to understand and understand all of the implications. I put this quote because I feel like that's not us. We are not a community where individuals don't have a voice. If this was Havifer Township, or Lower Merion Township, and this was a contentious issue, and I was the president of the Board of Commissioners, there could be 700 people in the room. And the opportunity for me to know all of your faces, or, I mean, in this room, I know most of you. I'm interested in getting to meet some of you, you know, that I don't recognize. So thank you for coming out. But, you know, that, that opportunity isn't there in a community of 50,000 or 60,000 people. But it is here. And I think that sometimes we feel something might be imminent, something might be coming, and I missed my chance to have some input. And part of my whole theme tonight is that that is not the case. This process has been going on for a long time, but there's still a lot of opportunity for people to have their input. Which is why we are talking about basically a draft that was published in September, when it was made open and available to the public, and still is not currently on the table for council to take any definitive action. I wanted to talk about the different roles of the different components in our government. Because we're not a township, we're a borough. And it's confusing, and sometimes a little boring, and it doesn't necessarily match what we see on TV. Because I think understanding the roles that each individual plays in our community helps us understand, one, how much power an individual elected official might have or may not have, and also, where the ideas are coming from. I want to talk about the motivations that led to developing the Form-Based Zoning Code. Why are we here today? Why not something else? Why do something at all? Those are things I'm going to address. I want to talk about the questions that I've been receiving about the Form-Based Zoning Code. I've heard some, some positives. Some people who have just written, you know, uncompromising letters of support. They're 100% behind it. They don't have any modifications or changes. That's great. But I've also heard people who have serious concerns. People who are afraid that, you know, council may unintentionally do something that would mess up what we have here, which is a really nice town. And I'd like to kind of go over those one by one. And then go over the potential timeline of future action that may be taken by Borough Council. This meeting is not an official meeting of Borough Council, because as you can see, other councilors are not here. There is not a quorum. I'm counting one. Am I missing another? Mr. Wegbright is here, he's on Borough Council. Our mayor is here, Mr. Grady. But this is the president's chat. This is really no different than any one of you calling Mr. Metric and saying, hey, I want to rent the room for 100 of my closest friends, and we'll have Sekira have a meeting about something. I mean, I am the president of council. In many ways, I am the voice of council when council chooses and authorizes me to speak on its united behalf. Tonight, I am speaking to you as Aaron Urick. So, official, unofficial, but as I mentioned in my email that many of you saw in the posts on Facebook, the goal is to be a little more informal. To speak to you without the solicitors sitting here and whispering in my ear about, don't say this, and avoid that, and, you know, it can be very frustrating when you're sitting in the other room and you're watching that happen. And so, there's nobody to tell me to do that, so, you know, here we are. I want you to understand, we'll start with the professional staff. Mr. Metric is very gracious for coming tonight to support me by clicking the buttons and maybe answering some technical questions that are above my, my pay grade, which is zero, so that helps. And many of you have met Mr. West, who has come on as our assistant manager. Most of you know that Mr. Metric came to us and was introduced to us as part of his role on the Montgomery County Planning Commission, when we engaged with the Montgomery County Planning Commission to help us develop a Form-Based Zoning Code. So we had the opportunity to have kind of a trial run with Sean, and work with him for many years, and see his professionalism, and his skill as a planner, and also, you know, as now transitioning into a role as leading our municipality on an administrative level. And Leslie Marshall, our treasurer, who many of you have seen in the office. These are your seven borough councilors. They live in all different parts of the borough. They come from all different walks of life. They have different professional experiences that they bring to the table that allow us to have, I would say, a very, very well-balanced council, in terms of the viewpoints. I think some of you saw that in recent votes, that were maybe divided. It's not a monolithic block. There is no secret cigar room in this building where we sit and agree on how it's going to be. And you know what? This is a small borough. It's 4,200 residents, three-quarters of a square mile. Unlike a larger township or a borough, say like Borough of Conshohocken, which is larger and has major, major commercial real estate. This isn't the place where there's just, you know, millions of dollars, like kind of behind closed doors. It's just not that kind of town. We're volunteers, we don't get paid, and, you know, we spend our nights at these meetings. We speak to each other on the phone occasionally. There's not a lot that goes on, honestly, behind the public sphere, other than, say, an official executive session. And I think that sometimes we, we all tend, in a very cynical society, to trend towards seeing maybe, I don't want to use the word conspiracy, because I think that's very harsh, but to see that things are happening, and strings are being pulled, and we're not included. And I want you to feel included. And, you know, I try to email people back. When you email me, feel free to email me your concerns. You can CC Mr. Metric, so that it's part of the record, and it's part of the borough's documentation of what happens over time. But all of these council members are your neighbors, and they are available to you. And you should feel free to approach any of them at any time. Council is not a monolithic body. It's seven individuals. They all have their own opinions, and they maintain those opinions. There isn't enough going on that there's really even horse trading in the borough politically, like, you give me this, I'll give you that. That's based on my seven years, you know, serving in this role, six, six and a half years and change, serving in this role. That's not really going on. So that's to your benefit, as the public, that you have these independent-minded people. The Planning Commission, it's currently a seven-member body. It was upgraded from five, because council felt like, wow, we have so many gifted professionals living in the borough, with backgrounds in planning, and architecture, and urban design, and all these different things, that by upgrading to seven, we could get those benefits of having people on the Planning Commission with more varied background, without maybe going to a larger number which may become unwieldy to manage. And the goal of the Planning Commission is to give advice and recommendations to council. So council, as an official action in an instance, would issue a marching order. We want you to investigate parking. We want you to investigate the zoning code and how it affects density. And then Planning Commission goes and it does that job, and it comes back and it issues a work product to council, and then council can decide what to do with that work product. The process demands, this is the legal process defined by the state of Pennsylvania, that all interests be considered and then balanced. Members of Planning Commission play a crucial role in balancing those hundreds of variables that affect our community. It almost seems to many of us who are not professionals, that there's so much out there, it's hard to even plan. Like, how can you know when you change X, that Y is going to happen? Because there's so many variables. How many people live in a house? How many cars do they have? What if everybody on the street does that same thing? What if nobody on the street does that thing? What if a developer buys every property that's available and develops it? What if that takes 20 years to happen? There's all different ways it can play out, and it's kind of, can seem really overwhelming. In trying to read planning books, looking at websites of professional certifying agencies, I can tell you that there is a method to their madness, and it's a good thing that I'm not a planner, because it's not my, not my strongest suit. But I'm confident that they, they do take a lot of time and consideration to look into all these options. They're not coming into the room with an agenda and trying to figure out how to move that agenda forward. I would also share with you, I'm going to tab over here. This is what guides the Planning Commission. It is a statement of community development objectives. And it's a little small for you to read, but I'll just pick out a couple. Maintain the borough as a unique and attractive community, offering a higher density, more mixed use, and greater walkability than surrounding suburban areas. Maintain a high level of public services and facilities through seeking appropriate tax things. Require adequate off-street parking with conversions to business or multiple residential uses. Providing safe and convenient circulation for pedestrians, bicyclists, vehicles. Cooperating with neighboring municipalities. Considering county suggested policies where major land use changes are contemplated. And this statement of community development objectives was enacted by Borough Council all the way back now, 25 years ago, in 1990. And it was referenced most recently in the current zoning ordinance 880, which was enacted by council in 2001. Those are the broad strokes that define what the Planning Commission does when it's given instructions from Borough Council. They look at their goals that were set up by this community, and then they try to interpret what they've been asked to do through this lens. And that's, regardless of maybe their personal feelings on a certain issue, that is how they come up with what they come up with. Some people have had questions about the county's involvement in our Planning Commission. In Pennsylvania, it is a requirement that once we do something with our Planning Commission, and they have maybe a recommendation in terms of an ordinance or language that could be adopted, has to go to the county Planning Commission for review. So that's where MCPC comes in and gets involved. These are the members of your Planning Commission. You might not know them. They have lots of public meetings. They would love for you to come. There's some participation from time to time, where, you know, there's question and answer, and you can discuss with them. Todd Bressi, Jim Cornwell, Dave Brower, Eli Holtman, Jim Spear, Miriam Shakow, Heidi Boys, some of them are here tonight. If the Planning Commission members could raise their hands afterwards, if someone wants to, you know, pull you aside, oh wow, one, two, three, four, five, six. Almost all seven. Pretty good. These Planning Commission members are also volunteers. They are, I think, three architects on the Planning Commission, one certified planner. They come with a lot of professional background that the borough gets for free, because they want to volunteer and make their community a better place. And I can say that in getting borough information from all the boroughs in Pennsylvania, we are really blessed. We are so lucky that our volunteer base is as skilled as it is. Because at a lot of municipalities, the people on the Planning Commission may have no background. They may have no experience. The community doesn't have that kind of professional development within it to draw these members from. There's other boards and commissions also. Many of you who follow the recent debates regarding ordinance 984, know that there's a zoning hearing board. It's a separate body. It's not controlled by council. Members are appointed to it by council, but it is not controlled by council. It has its own solicitor. It's a completely independent body, that when someone has an appeal or a zoning issue, it's almost like a court of law for zoning in our borough. And that is a three-member board, and there's one alternate member. There's the UCC Board of Appeals that we share with Lower Merion. That is, when it's like a legal, legalism regarding the universal construction code. So you may end up with a construction project where you have a disagreement, and it would go to the UCC Board of Appeals. And then there's all kinds of other boards and commissions. This is my pitch for you to get involved in your community. There are so many different ways that all of these people, I mean, the borough family of people involved in civic discourse here is, is greater than a couple percent of the borough population of adults. And that speaks to the level of community involvement, and how much influence that you can have. And you can choose a role for yourself that uses the amount of free time that you choose to offer. It doesn't have to be a job where it's all-consuming. It can be a job where maybe it's only a certain time of year, and maybe it's in a way that you like, maybe it's aligned with your professional interests, or maybe it's completely not, and it gives you an opportunity to learn something. My little, my little pitch right there. You also have other groups. The Civic Association, I see some strong representation this evening. And groups of citizens that just choose, from time to time, to organize themselves around particular issues. So how do all these people work together? Well, I passed out the schedule that talked about how we started in 2011 with the Form-Based Zoning Code. We actually started two years prior to that, when we began at the Planning Commission level. The borough began reading through the existing code in detail, and trying to figure out if it could be fixed, or modified, or changed, or cleaned up in some way. And that led us to a decision in 2011, that we were going to move forward with a, with a quote, "a new code." That is, rather than trying to fix a patchwork that had been repeatedly, you know, hobbled together over time, and whose original format came from a literally pull-off-the-shelf buy-a-code for a suburban community, and then patched over time to something that really represented the best thinking of what planners and people who work in this area consider to be the way that a community like ours, a walkable pedestrian community, should be organized. Some people have asked about why it's taken so long? Why, why has it been so many years for us to get to this point? And one of the reasons is simply that we are a small borough. We could have allocated funds, hired a professional planning group, written a very large check, and handed over kind of the decision-making to, you know, people who have worked in an office building not in the borough of Narberth. And instead, council chose to work with our volunteers, and with the county Planning Commission as much as possible, to move that forward. And I'll get into that in more detail. So, past, present, and future. If you mind, I'll just, the press release you have speaks to this a little bit. And I'm going to summarize this, which was, looks like it was released back in February as a document from the Planning Commission. When the code was adopted, the majority of buildings in Narberth had already been constructed. The standards for use, lot coverage, setbacks, and density reflected current thinking of municipal planners, did not necessarily reflect what was already built in the borough. The existing code bears little resemblance to the Narberth that actually exists, and this puts our town at risk. No resident can be assured that changes next door will be consistent and compatible with the existing built environment. Because the current code does not accurately describe Narberth, it would be impossible to build Narberth based on our code. Grandfathering, you know, anything existing now will be permitted to remain. Uses that are in use now will be permitted under, if this new code were to be adopted. If those uses were abandoned, then maybe those grandfathered uses could be lost. But the state of PA has a pretty high standard for considering an abandoned use. The Planning Commission suggested looking at some things when you're thinking about the Form-Based Code. Changes are often subtle. This code is designed to respect the characteristics of each block, to understand how it is accomplished, and if you plan to make changes to your property, you should carefully read through the requirements of the zoning district. Council and the Planning Commission did not want to institute a taste police. Nobody wanted to tell anybody what color they should paint their house. But they do recognize that homes should be built and altered in ways that are integrated into the neighborhood, so that they all seem like a cohesive whole. We weren't looking to add significant additional expense when people want to do a renovation or a change to their home. We didn't want it to have to, so for example, go through a whole series of hearings and boards, and you have to hire your own lawyer, just to make a small change. And we hope and believe, and I'm reading in the voice of the Planning Commission here, that every member of Borough Council, that the code will increase home values and maintain the unique and desirable fabric of the borough. So, this has been a long process. I think there is a little misunderstanding in regards to when the Form-Based Code became public. So they began working on a document back in 2011. And every meeting where they discussed that document, and worked with the county on those documents, were public. And at the same time, they also had a number of information sessions, where they kind of, in broad strokes, described what this Form-Based Code is all about, what these community development goals are, how that's going to look. And then, at those meetings, a document was assembled. That document, which was very complicated, with lots of cross-references, and that document itself was not made public until September. So while it was possible, if you attended a lot of Planning Commission meetings, to keep track of what was going on, it was not possible for you to hold a document in your hand and see, what's the current draft in 2012? What's the current draft in 2013? And I think there's a balance between the Planning Commission issuing a 104-page document that makes sense, and waiting until we get to that point, versus publishing something that may be very, very drafty and haphazard, where people reading it might get the wrong impression. Where they might come with criticisms and see problems with it that the Planning Commission was planning to get to at their next meeting. You know, and then kind of wasting time, because we cycle and cycle and cycle. It's been public for nine months, six, six months now. And it's gone through a single draft since then, from what we call our 3.0 version, which was what was first made public in September, to a 4.0 version. They integrated some changes based on feedback. And I will go over some of those changes. On its base, the Form-Based Code has form-based standards. That's one section of the document, controlling the massing of buildings. We have all seen, and most of us, I can't speak for all of you, are unhappy with a home that fits Narberth being torn down, and a house that actually fits the physical limits of the current zoning code's box, to create the maximum amount of square footage for a developer to sell a house for the maximum dollar amount. And you drive down the street, and you see, cute, 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 cute. What happened there? And you keep, right? That's what the Form-Based Code is talking about. It's a way of, I have to say, I came to this a little late. Because like, you don't want taste police. And everybody knows what's good when they see it. But how do you codify it? How do you make it legal, under the rules of the state of Pennsylvania, to have kind of a taste police, in a sense that there are some guidelines? But not in the sense that you have to go before a review board, or that there's jockeying of who gets to be on the board, because they get to make decisions about what you can do in your home. That's not Narberth. So a Form-Based Standard comes from the, kind of, the forefront of thinking and planning, of ways to do that without going overboard. And I found it hard to grasp at first, and I think, you know, that some of you who've read this document, who have no planning background, found it difficult also. But it's grown on me over the years, I have to tell you. It's grown on me, in the way that it can do things, like, kind of, what we've seen with some of these new homes. I'm not going to throw a developer under the bus, you know? They're doing what they have the legal right to do, under our current code. But that, those houses, which maybe, you know, before you could see your neighbor through the window, and now you feel like your neighbor's window is right here, right in front of your face, under the Form-Based Code, controlling that massing, means that there has to be more room between properties. That they can't stuff as many square feet into a home as they could under the existing code. It also encourages construction to fit on the block. And what that means is that the standards are really block-based. So that rather than applying a broad brush that the town has to have homes that all look like X, and then we grandfather in everybody, because nobody has a block that looks like that, because there's been 100 years of infed development. Instead, each block kind of gets its own style, its own form, its own kind of even setbacks, so the houses aren't jutting out or pulling back. If the houses on that block all have porches, well then you're going to have to build a house with a front-facing porch. I think we all know that, you know, front-facing garages are not necessarily what this town is about from a style standpoint. We like to be interacting with people on our street, not just kind of watch them go into a garage and the door closes behind them. And the Form-Based Code and the Form-Based Standards would prohibit something like that. I've heard a lot of people saying that the Form-Based Code does not stop tear downs. And I think that's true. And I think that the Planning Commission, under its community development guidelines, and the laws of the state of Pennsylvania, recognize, you can't just stop development. It's not legal. You can't say, nothing can ever change in this town moving forward. That's illegal, that's kind of a taking, almost. You're telling people, you have this property, you had all these options of things you could do with it, and now you can do nothing. But instead, what it does is it tries to minimize the financial incentives to maximizing that box, by constraining what can be done. Well, maybe it makes sense to rehab that house. Because what I could build in its place isn't that much grander, or worth that much more than what's already there. So you can preserve some of the older architecture, and the older construction, reduce waste, improve reuse, and have a house that's already on the block that fits into the block, that may get gutted from the inside and have an addition put in the back, but not necessarily demolished, carted away, and replaced with something that looks like it fell from space to earth. This is the map on projector number two. It allows for some, the current zoning code allows for some density increase now. I think there was a build-out projection done, in terms of the number of units that could be added. If you took every property that could have another unit, or be divided into two units, it was, it went up, what, 22%? Is that correct? Under the Form-Based Code, that calculation changes, and it comes in at about 24% in terms of a maximum theoretical build-out scenario. What you're seeing here, in terms of these colors, is a walking of the block, which Mr. Metric did, and members of the Planning Commission did, and trying to see, regardless of what the current zoning code says about a block, what is the feel of that block? What is, what currently exists on that block? So if there are apartment units on that block, and other underdeveloped properties, does it make sense that they should remain in conflict? Or maybe if we had an opportunity to steer growth, rather than having growth just kind of pop up like bubbles all over, maybe we could constrain where that growth happens? Bring it closer to the train station? Bring it closer to the downtown? Representing a concept that, you know, at the center of your city, whatever that is, is where the most density is, and as you move out towards the perimeter, there is less. That's true with the city of Philadelphia, and it is also with the borough of Narberth. And you can see the red area and the amber area as being places with, you know, limited single-family, with limited homes. Part of the development guidelines are that we should allow in the borough for a diversity of housing types, for people in all stages of life. So early adulthood, families, empty nesters, retirees, and also a wide range of economic backgrounds. And this is something that personally, I fear we will lose in this borough. Because what I see as part of the Narberth volunteer spirit, is how we all do come from different places, how we are all at different places in our lives, how we have different careers. We have a lot of, you know, unskilled people working in this, living in this town. We have skilled tradesmen, we have professionals, we have professors, we have the whole gamut. And if we lose that, we lose what makes this a community. And then it just becomes kind of a place where a certain kind of people live. And that, that's really hard to replace, and no one's really quite sure, you know, and planners have their ideas, why Narberth has that so much. Why, when you read in the newspapers from the 1930s about Narberth 4th of July, the same enthusiasm, kind of a silly giddy, small-town enthusiasm that is a little cliché and, you know, folksy, is the is the same enthusiasm that we publish today. And the strong, committed groups of volunteers that we have have crossed over all that time while other communities don't have that, while they've lost that because people are not participating as much in their communities. One of the things that concerns me, that I see very directly, being a member of the Narberth Fire Company, is that you have Narberth children who grow up to be Narberth adults, who are trained in Montgomery County to be firefighters and to serve this community, who then reach a point in their late twenties when they get married that, as a skilled tradesperson, they cannot afford to live in this community. And so then they move away. So not only do we lose their fire protection, which hurts us, but also we lose, very clearly, that part of, that this can be a multi-generational town with grandparents and parents and children and grandchildren all living in the same three-quarters square mile. Now, if that's your family, you have to deal with that because I can't. I have a little, I have a couple miles' distance from me. But that is the kind of community that we want, where mom can sell her house to her son, who moves in with his wife and children, and then can move into a one-bedroom down the street or can get an apartment, you know, on a second floor. Things like that. That's what we want to retain in this community. That's part of the development goals that the Planning Commission had. And so a lot of the questions about why this, why where, why allow certain development in certain areas? We're allowing development. We can't just cut it to zero. But at the same time, we want to do it in a way that promotes that goal of making this the kind of town that extended families can live in and that people in different stages of life can come here and live. And the other goal that they had was to dramatically reduce the amount of grandfather nonconformity. It's very difficult when you have a property and it's nonconforming. Because if you want to make a change to that property, you have to bring it into conformity before you can make that change. And so it's kind of like a, you're kind of frozen. And I'll get into this a little more about ways that the Form-Based Zoning Code deals with it. But I did want to talk a little bit about the integration of the parts. I've definitely heard some comments from the community about, "Well, you know, we love the Form-Based Standards, but the zoning should be considered separately." And I think it's very important to remember, at least from my perspective, that this document was prepared as a single document. And while different sections are in different sections, they rely on each other. They back each other up. So that, for example, where currently, the code has certain parking restrictions, and that's the only way that certain growth can be restrained from doing something that we wouldn't like. Under this code, the Form-Based Standards take some of that role. And so you don't just need to use parking as the baseball bat because you have other tools in the toolbox. But they all are designed to work together cohesively. I think we tried to calculate, Mr. Metric, how many hours were spent developing the Form-Based Code? And, you know, because it's important to realize we've all, in our lives, been in places where we've sat in a room with a complicated discussion and we feel like we're spinning in circles. And I think the Planning Commission probably had that discussion about, you know, 100 times. Over 100 different, very late evenings. And that doesn't include the discussions that the county planners had in the same regard. It was a few thousand hours, at least. More, Sean, you want to give me?
That's about right.
A few thousand hours. And that was also, if we were, that's the Planning Commission alone, you know, cumulative person hours. In terms of the county, the employees of the county that are working on this project, do you want to hazard a guess?
Anywhere from a third to a half of my time for three years was dedicated to Narberth.
So it's been through a lot. It's been through a lot. So let's get to the 4.0. Few changes. There were some definitions upgraded. I don't have a red line, and I'll tell you the reason why. I would have liked to have a red line because it makes it so much easier for you to flip through. But this document, with all of its graphics and charts, was designed as an Adobe InDesign document. And those of you who know, it's used, you know, when you're publishing a magazine or whatever. It's a graphic design software. And I'm not going to fault anyone for making that choice back at the beginning when they put this together, but it does not have redlining capability. It's different than Microsoft Word or some other, you know, Google Docs or whatever where you have that. So we don't have a redline version of this document. But we do have, as a summary of those changes, and I know that the various Planning Commission members and myself and borough councilors and Mr. Metric and the office would be happy if you have a specific question about how to line up these changes, which are posted, that you could line them up to places in the document so you could see the actual side-by-side September-to-March changes. We changed some definitions, updated some parking regulations. Mr. Metric, could you speak to those parking regulations changes? Do you have that handy?
Yeah, they're pretty extensive. I mean, the difference between the draft 3.0 to 4.0?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
You want to just give us a quick rundown? I don't want people to feel like we're glossing it, but it is complicated.
It is complicated. There's a table in the code that talks about how many spaces a use needs, depending on how intense the use is. And we changed some of those ratios to reflect standards that were adopted in other communities. We changed the shared parking ratios in the code. Which, in other words, if you have two different uses, two different, all uses have a time of day where they demand the most off-street parking, and some share better with others. But I found, after working in the office now for a year, that that creates a very tough administrative hurdle. So we flattened all that sharing ratio down to one number. So that was an observation I made as part of working in administration. We also reduced the amount of credits in Section 3 that one can claim for a particular property because we did some additional site testing that made me think that number was too high. So there was a lot of tuning that went into the off-street parking standard since its last published draft.
Okay. We also moved the parking design in residential districts. We changed it and moved to the zoning hearing board. Could you speak to that?
Yeah, we had an awkward way to prioritize the types of residential parking design that we wanted. It was awkward in the fact that I couldn't see myself trying to enforce that in the office. So we prioritized a parking design by right, where parking can be located in the rear of a lot. And then should an applicant owner want to do any other kind of parking design, they would have to go through the zoning hearing board, which gives that body some discretion to attach reasonable conditions to the approval, and it makes it less palatable for the applicant to go through.
Okay. There were some updates to the permitted uses by zone, an update to the conditional use process. Accessory building setbacks were reduced to three feet. Do you remember what they were previously in 3.0?
They vary from five to seven feet, and that came out of a discussion of why, when you make it five or seven feet, you've just created five or seven feet of
Kind of useless space.
destitute space, you're useless space, so why not make it three?
We called it the place where your neighbor plants their tomatoes.
Yes. And three is the minimum distance you can have from the edge of a building to a lot line and still have windows that can open and close. If you get closer, they have to be fire-rated and blocked off.
We limited accessory buildings to be one-story only. With a maximum of 16 feet. That was some feedback that we heard. There were some residences that used to be institutional buildings, which were included on the zoning map as institutional, former institutional buildings, and they were removed and changed to be just, you know, as if that past use didn't exist, just they're considered residences now. Apartment building was removed as a use in 5A and 5B.
As a building type?
As a building type.
You can still have multifamily dwellings in our downtown of Montgomery Avenue. They just have to be built in a mixed-use building going forward, which would be some retail use on the ground floor and then living space above.
Right. And you updated the zoning map to reflect the development of the townhouses on the former tennis courts.
Yes, we did, yeah. And a few extra buildings had to be put into the borough. We had a building boom the last three years.
Yes, yes, we did. And the front facade data?
Lauren from the county has completed that, and that table will be in the next draft.
Okay. That's what's new. I know that a lot of you have questions that were unanswered by the what's new. A lot have concerns about things in the code that don't seem to have changed in what's new. This is an open, public process. It's a political process. This is something that borough councilors are not all in agreement on. And this is something where, you know, come to a meeting Wednesday night, you'll have an opportunity to say what you think. I'm going to get into next, questions and answers, questions that I've received and answers. But before I do that, you know, with this presentation, I kind of started at the very beginning, who are your borough councilors? How does government work? And tried to move us through as if maybe this is your first meeting. Because I heard a lot of, "Why are we rushing through?" And I think for those of us who've been involved in the process, you know, coming on eight, nine, 10 years of thinking about this, it doesn't seem like such a rush. But for others, you know, it's not your responsibility to stay involved and come to every meeting. I understand how it can seem that way. So I wanted to start at the beginning so that everybody could have a primer on it. I hope I've done a half-decent job, and if I haven't, I hope you'll tell me. Shoot me an email. I like it. But I think the Form-Based Zoning Code has been a slow, methodical process moving along. And as I get to the end of this meeting, through, after I get through these questions, we'll talk about next steps and where it goes from here. I've asked, heard questions, "Why is the county involved?" I mentioned briefly that, under PA law, when we make a change to any zoning ordinance, it has to go to the county Planning Commission for a review to make sure that it complies. And, you know, I'm not a lawyer, but I'm going to imagine that's partly because there's a zillion little boroughs and municipalities all over PA, and a lot of them don't have those resources, as I mentioned, these professionals. They want to make sure that somebody who really knows what they're doing takes a look at this stuff before it gets enacted into law. You know, let's save us from ourselves to some extent. The other reason that the county is involved is because when we came to decide, okay, we've spent two years reviewing the old code, we don't think it can be fixed, we think it's a patchwork, we think it's a mess, we think it's going to be impossible, we need to create something new, and we're kind of trending in the direction of this kind of style of new. We solicited bids, excuse me, from different organizations to see what it's going to cost. And the county came in with the lowest bid, which is always good. Also, knowing that things have to be reviewed and approved by the county, well, you know, that kind of increases your odds that whatever we come up with as a planning commission has already been through that first-level vetting before it has to go up there, and then you get bad news and you already spent your consulting dollars. Sean, do you remember how much we paid?
About, I think we, the county made about $9 an hour off of my work.
Needless to say, the commercial bids were significantly more. So I think we got a great value, and that's the reason for the county's involvement. I also heard a question, "Is this being driven by changes in Lower Merion Township?" I don't know of any. I don't think Lower Merion Township, other than in examples of maybe what we didn't want to do in certain transit-oriented districts. I'm not throwing LM under the bus, but, you know, Narberth has always had kind of a unique vision of what it wants to do with itself. And there has been some transit-oriented development in Ardmore and Bryn Mawr, and we've been watching it, and, you know, I think Narberth wants to kind of go its own way. Why is the zoning changing at all? I think I've gone through the goal of change in the zone and why certain things are moving around. So when I'm walking up Essex Avenue, for example, there are already a lot of apartment buildings in the fabric of that block. And so it wouldn't be inappropriate to say, prune off some growth from an area that is more houses and less multifamily units and move that development, if it's ever going to happen on its own commercial terms, to an area that already kind of looks like that, that's in closer walking distance to the train and on the bus route and near the shops, et cetera, et cetera. I think that it was very clear, based on the level of nonconformity, that not only did certain zones need to move around a little in terms of where the lines are, but also that the rules in those zones needed to change so that the properties in those zones were more likely to be conforming than nonconforming. Are certain uses removed from civic institutional buildings? Why are certain uses only permitted by a conditional use or special exception? This was specifically raised to me in regards to childcare, offering childcare services in our civic institutional buildings. Under the Form-Based Code, it is a conditional use where the applicant could apply. And I think, Mr. Metric, maybe you could speak to what, the difference kind of between a conditional use and a special exception? And I'm asking you because I find it confusing because it's, you know, zoning talk, and I don't get it.
I like to call it, there's nothing special or exceptional about a special exception. It's spelled out pretty clearly what you have to do, and you schedule a hearing with the zoning hearing board, and if you meet the standards, you get it. A conditional use is typically a much higher approval process where council, you have to get your approval from borough council or Board of Supervisors if you're in a township. And that governing body has a lot more discretion to apply conditions of approval. And usually, the conditional use's standards are much more involved. There's, more of it is spelled out for you in the code, and it's more gray area. And lots of developers don't like to do it because of that reason. It's a lot of uncertainty.
So let's say that, let's say that I have a civic institutional building and I want to open a childcare. What would the standards be that I would have to meet?
You'd have to preserve the existing building, and then you would have to meet all of the other standards. You would if you were doing a childcare facility anywhere else in any other kind of building. You would have to provide the parking that the zoning code calls for. And since you're doing a childcare center, you'd have to be compliant with the state rules about how a childcare center has to operate.
Proof of the ability to obtain that license would be something that would be part of that process. Straight up, why does the Form-Based Zoning Code allow increased density? I think this speaks a lot to what density means. And it's kind of like, keep Narberth Narberth, right? You know, you know it when you see it. It's like the style police. Maybe some density is good density, and maybe other density is bad density. The density I don't like is when I feel like, "Gosh, I can't get from A to B because there's too many cars." Or, you know, "I used to be able to see out my side window, but now I'm looking into someone's bedroom four inches away." That's the kind of density that maybe some of us moved here to get away from, and some of us chose to live here because we didn't want to get any closer. But there's also good density. The kind of density that, because of maybe the way the buildings that allow for more multifamily homes to be designed, that they fit into their streets better, they don't stand out as an eyesore along a beautiful block of homes, that they are close to transit so that the kinds of people that end up moving and living there use fewer vehicles so that it actually, in a way, promotes less traffic and less congestion on our streets, that there are more people to support businesses. You know, I always, I hear from people from time to time who say, "Well, this is a very high-rent district. You know, the rents that they charge for the buildings in our downtown are significant." These are struggling business owners. I mean, they're individual proprietors. There's no Starbucks corporate, you know, just kind of plowing money in so that they can have one on this corner too, regardless of what the coffee shop is delivering. If we had a coffee shop, it's either making money or it's not. It's either open or it's going to close. So, you know, an extra 100 people, an extra 150 people, added to the borough over a period of time, years, 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 may not necessarily be a bad thing if it's done in a way that doesn't give us those negative impacts that we think about when we think of congestion and traffic and traffic lights and et cetera. That was the goal, at least as it has been explained to me of the Planning Commission in this regard, recognizing that we can't freeze time, we can't stop all development, and that even if we could, it would not maintain the social fabric of our town because the future brings with it change. Change that can't always be predicted. That's kind of the beauty of our system, is that, you know, the business needs will dictate what happens in a way, operating within the rules that the zoning code allows. And those rules were designed with our community development goals in mind, the goals that we set. Does the Form-Based Zoning Code allow the same uses that were defeated in Ordinance 984? Commercial mixed-use allowed in church properties. And I know specifically, for many of you, the Elmwood Avenue Church. And the answer is yes. It does. It allows for a 100% commercial use of that property as long as the facade is retained. Sean, correct me if I'm wrong. Sean is nodding. He is correct. And I know that for many of you, that is a very hot button and a showstopper. And I encourage you to communicate that to your borough councilors. I'm not trying to choose, cherry-pick my questions here to make this all look rosy and great. I supported Ordinance 984. I saw a limited mixed use in that I saw a limited mixed use in that building as being good for our community, but I completely respect that I live on the north side and I don't live next to that building. And I also respect that regardless of where you live, you might be, you might disagree. And there is no one uptop who's telling us who's right or wrong. And I want you all to feel like you can come to council meetings and you can speak your minds, and regardless of how heated the discussion might get between individual councilors at each other, or between, you know, everything going on, come to the meeting, you have a right to speak your piece and you should do so. So that is what is currently allowed in the Form-Based Zoning Code. This Form-Based Code is supposed to keep things from changing, it doesn't stop teardowns. You know, we recognize that we like Narberth as it is, we recognize that Narberth is under a lot of economic pressure. I talked about the fact that firefighters can't afford to live in this town, that many of our children will grow up to be unable to afford to live in this town. And I see that as a bad thing. And change is gonna happen. And we can't let Narberth stay in the past, where the vibrancy of our businesses will decline, our property values will decline. So the goal of the Form-Based Code was, again, to incent reuse of property over teardown. And then if there is a teardown, constrain what can be put in its place to limit the economic upside, say, versus other communities where the kinds of things we don't want here, they can go somewhere else, and the kind of things we do want here can happen. Why does the zoning code allow for flat-top room apartment, flat-top roof apartment buildings? Roof. Again, I think this speaks to form, the form and design standards that are in the Form-Based Code. We all can pick out a flat-top roof apartment building in the borough that we walk past on a regular basis that we don't like, that we think is really ugly, that we don't think fits onto the block that it's in. The goal is, although we can't do anything about what exists currently, is that if new ones were to be built, yes, they may have flat roofs, but that they will fit in terms of setbacks and porches and entryways and the percentage of glass to, you know, building material and all of those things, so that you kind of notice them, but they fit into place. It's a tricky thing. And so when I hear criticism from the community, I hear you, because it's a taste police without having a taste police. And where do we draw the line? And right now, the draft is the standards that the planning commission put together. It doesn't mean that it's set in stone, it doesn't mean that it's gonna change, it's a political process. But I hope that you can understand that the kinds of buildings that exist now are not necessarily the ones that would be built if additional apartment units were gonna be put in place in the borough. And that the form standards are working to your benefit in that way. Why wasn't a full parking study done prior to developing the parking components of the code? This is a good one. Well, I guess one reason is that for us to adopt the code, it is not actually required for us to do so. And in that way, that zoning and parking, they're complicated. It's not just a matter of if you add, you know, another family unit that you're gonna have this many more cars, et cetera. The code allows for the same kind of growth between the two. So really, the kinds of growth that would happen, although it may happen in certain areas under a new code versus an old code, is not significantly different in terms of the number of people that could potentially, in a maximum build-out scenario, happen in the borough. It's also that if those, that build-out and that density started to increase in that way, if people started moving in and developers started doing things, it doesn't all happen overnight, it happens over time, it gives council the opportunity at some point to make updates, to make changes, to do things. And also, I gotta tell you, there's only so much that we can do all at once. It took us eight years to get from start to finish. If we threw in an additional parking study, we may have gotten good data out of it. I don't think you get a good result if it takes 10 years to get it, because things change too much, they change too often. And when you get there, the landscape that you started with is too different. So I think there were also some questions in regards to parking about, you know, why does it change, why does it reduce some of the parking requirements for residential structures? And one of them is, so that you can make a change to your home, you can make an addition, say add a bedroom, without having to add a curb cut, add a driveway that you're not gonna use because you're already parking on the street in front of your own house, and hopefully, that because you could add that bedroom and your mother could move in, that you don't have to move out of the borough. And that it doesn't have to become a big complicated thing, that people can stay here and they can develop their properties in a way that kind of focuses on the rear of the property, not the street-facing part of the property, and allow people to do the kinds of things that we all need to do from time to time, without, again, adding more curb cuts so that the kids on the tricycles going down the street have to look out for 27 more driveways as they're going down. Why does the Form-Based Code draft prohibit construction of enclosed porches? Again, this is a style decision, it came, this is a question that came before council, it got kicked back to the planning commission, I think there was a lot of split opinion on it. What's currently in the draft is a restriction on constructing enclosed porches. It is believed that a porch acts as a medium layer in terms of the privacy of your property. So you have the street, you have your porch, and then you have behind your front door. And when your porch becomes enclosed, that it gets rid of that middle layer. Now you just have a door, and you're either inside your home or you're on the street. And that what facilitates pedestrian involvement in a lively streetscape is that connection where you sit, see someone sitting on their porch, and you talk to them, and they talk to you, and you have discussions, and that kind of social engagement is what happens. Now, there's a lot of porches in Narberth that are enclosed, and there may be some of you that feel like you should be able to enclose your porch, and some of you who feel like, even though you don't want to enclose your porch, you should have the right to do so. And again, I encourage you to come to a council meeting and discuss it, because that is clearly, you know, a choice made by the planning commission, under their best guidance. But everyone is entitled to their opinion, and it's, it's a political process. Did people on building, Borough Council and Planning Commission attend conferences and workshops about Form-Based Code, smart growth? I think this speaks to kind of, how does the planning commission and Borough Council know enough about this to do something like this? And I would say, there was a lot of books that were handed out, there was a textbook on Form-Based Zoning that I read, so I didn't attend a conference, but I did read a textbook. And it made me sure that I didn't want to be a planner, but in my role on council, I did what I had to do. We hired a consultant, Sandy Sorlian, who gave long and extensive conversations about smart growth and how that works in terms of planning and zoning. And I know that given the professional experience of lots of our planning commission members, that they have extensive experience. In fact, one of them, Mr. Bressi, implemented a Form-Based Zoning Code in Hatfield, New Jersey. Is that correct? Hatfield, New Jersey? Which, in New Jersey, had to go all the way to the state level for approval before it could be enacted. And that was a design standards and also a zoning change in that town. So we, we do have a lot of experience in the borough on that matter. Also, Mr. Metric, you are a certified planner?
Yeah.
Yes? And have extensive experience in it as well, and now you're also our borough manager. So we tend to get that experience for free, in addition to your administrative expertise.
Free.
Free.
Wow. Can I?
How much is the Form-Based Zoning Code costing us? Well, I think Mr. Metric discussed what we paid the county, how many years now? Five?
We paid the county three years to develop the code, and we extended that agreement another three years. So Lauren with the county now is supporting our work.
Okay, and it's about?
Which is not just Form-Based Code, it's all the?
How much per year, do you remember?
It's roughly $9,000 per year.
It's a bargain. I'm sure there are some solicitor fees that are involved in reviewing things from time to time.
Sure, absolutely.
But I think $9,000 times six years, plus some fee, you know, you get an idea of what it costs. I remember some of the proposals were, you know, almost six times that cost, just from the commercial firms, just to get us to three years ago. So that, it's been dollars in some perspective in that regard. Do they have the professional licenses and experience to create and implement a code? Do they have legal standing to create a document like this? Speaking to the county planning commission, the borough staff, the planning commission. And, you know, I can tell you that I have seen a number of questions in this regard on this, I've run them by the solicitor. The solicitor did not have any real problems with those questions as they were written and submitted to me. Mr. Metric, I don't know that you have anything to add.
No doubt.
I, I don't, I can tell you, as president of council, I am quite confident that we can legally pass this code as it is written, and that it is legal in the state of Pennsylvania to do so in the way that it was constructed. Now, the solicitor, he can come up with his own language, and he can tell me I shouldn't have said that, but that's where we are. Some other questions. Is Narberth a member of ICLEI? I, I didn't know what that was until I got that question. I, I still don't really know what it is, but I've never heard of it before, so I'm gonna say no, we're not. Are we under confidential agreements with related organizations to ICLEI in regards to planning? Uh, no, I don't think that it would be legal for us to enter into a confidential planning agreement under PA law, so. And I've been on panel, Bob, maybe you wanna weigh in on that?
I can't speak to ICLEI.
And is the borough working in regards to UN Agenda 21? I also don't know what that is, so I'm gonna say no. Some other comments that I've received. Criticism that there's been insufficient public notice regarding the Form-Based Zoning Code, and I'm gonna get to kind of next steps, but I think there has been a tremendous community outreach over the years to get people involved. We had public workshops on multiple occasions, open houses, documents being published, the civic association has done a bang-up job every time there's new information, to get it out there to those members who are connected via Facebook and email. There is no legal requirement for a borough-wide zoning change for us to send, say, a letter to every affected household. It's also been in all the borough mailings for many, many years now, that go out twice a year, reporting on its progress moving forward. So I've also heard criticism of process, methods, participants. Look, this is a small community, we're all entitled to different opinions. I think this has been, in my sense, an incredibly professional, open process. There are definitely components of this document that many of you in this room may disagree with, and some of those disagreements, they may be, well, I wish it didn't, and some of them are showstoppers. And that's where you have the opportunity to come and speak to your borough council members, either in private or at a public meeting, all of their phone numbers are available and their emails are available, and you can express your concerns, because this document is not law until it is passed by Borough Council in an open, public vote. I've heard, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And I think a lot of what we've talked about, in terms of the history of how it's gotten to this point, in terms of the pressures that we're seeing economically on development in this borough, and the challenges that our business community has, et cetera, show that things, things are broken. I mean, they're not running as smoothly as they could be. They could be better, and it's our job to always aim to improve things and try and make them better, rather than kind of accepting the status quo. I've also heard that, you know, things are so delicate that we could break the town, that if we do this, the unforeseen consequence will come and it'll get us. I have to say, I often trend towards that line of thinking, but over the years, based on my getting to know the members, their expertise, this document, becoming more familiar with it, reading the documents of other communities, seeing other communities that have gone down this route and made this change successfully, that does not concern me personally anymore. And sometimes, when something is kind of new and unfamiliar, our initial reaction is, you know, you see that brand-new car and you're like, that's the ugliest thing I've ever seen. Three years later, when everyone's driving one, you know, you may have a different opinion. So future timelines, there's a council caucus meeting, it's Wednesday, it's 8:00 PM. It may be in this room, it may be over there. I, as president, would like to try and be in that room, if it's not too many people, because I think it's a more intimate setting.
Sunday night's better.
Wednesday, the ninth. I'm not gonna edit it, the ninth. It's a more intimate environment, I think it leaves more, it's a more neighborly environment. This room, it can be harder to hear all the councilors, they can't always see each other. But if there's so many people that we don't fit, you know, there's a certain amount of standing room only that I'll accept, otherwise we're out. We'll come over to here. And then there's a council meeting on Monday, March 14. The caucus meeting always is the working session of council. That is when we hash out the issues, when we discuss our disagreements, when we try and come up with a plan. The business meeting, Monday, March 14, is when that's come together and there's something on the table to vote on. So if you wanna hear debate, if you wanna hear where individual council members stand so that you can call them and tell them you agree, you disagree, you wanted to change their mind, you support them, that's the Wednesday night meetings. It's always the Wednesday night meetings to attend, because that's where you're gonna get the most information. The Monday night meetings are often shorter, you do have the opportunity to put something on the public record, but kind of the opportunity to have input is often later in the game. Yes, you get to speak before a vote, but people are starting to make up their minds and know where they're gonna stand on a certain issue. So I expect the council will be discussing this draft, council members will be discussing where they stand on it, they'll be discussing parts of it that they like or dislike, or if they have any changes, or maybe everybody's happy with it and they're ready to move forward, in which case, on Monday, council would have its first opportunity to introduce this code. And in the legal language saying introduce means to schedule a public hearing. And if that happened, if council chose to introduce this, it means that in its form that it's in now, it would have a public hearing thirty, not less than 30 days following. This is where I get into, you know, the solicitor would be whispering in my ear to correct dates. And then after the hearing, which there'll be a court reporter and all that rigmarole, then council could choose to vote that night to approve or deny, or they could sit on it and wait till their next meeting and decide then to whether to approve or deny. I think some action has to be taken within a 60-day period of scheduling a hearing. So that is kind of how it is gonna play out. I don't know whether this will be introduced for a hearing Monday night, and I think anyone who tells you that they know is making it up. So come to the meetings, don't be afraid, and stay involved. So that's it for me. I am looking forward to Thursday night, after you've been to the caucus meeting, if you need another night out, if you're tired of hearing this voice and you miss me so much, I wanna hear what you have to say. And I want, what I wanna do is not just sit here and have you talk at me, it's your turn to talk, not my turn to just get into a back-and-forth, but hear what you're saying and try and integrate it into the kinds of discussions I'm hearing amongst borough councilors. So that, how do I take your comments and try and make them effective in a public debate? That's what I'm trying to do, so that people are talking to each other and they're listening to each other, rather than talking over each other and just becoming more and more agitated, because we all love this community. That's why you're coming out on a Monday night, people have been at work, we're tired, we all love this community. Our vision of this community moving forward is closer than maybe the Facebook discussions make it seem. We are a lot more aligned on this than we may realize. And it is my hope that I can help facilitate moving this borough forward in a way that will mean that when my children grow up, they can live in this community if they can handle living so close to me. And then it'll be the same kind of wonder town for their children that it has been for mine. So that's it, thank you.